Um.
Not.
We will go ahead and I will be taking a minute today, well, so we'll go ahead and start the roll call. Um, Cosman?
Here.
Uh, Wiseman is absent, Steiger?
Yep.
Uh, Heron?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Um, by the way, John is absent. Um, Conway?
Here.
Henderson?
Here.
Hister?
Here.
Uh, Pitts?
Here.
Uh, Edwards is absent, Edwards is absent, O'Day is here. We have court, thank you. Moving on to agenda IMV, this is the approval of the previous meeting minutes, the July eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns for that?
What?
Yes?
My God, they're brief.
They are brief. Um, I think we've talked before, one minute minutes about doing that.
I guess I almost missed that one.
Yeah. It was, it was packed agenda, yes.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
By Steiger, second by Henderson. Okay, uh, Cosman?
Yes.
Uh, Wiseman is absent, Steiger?
I'm.
Uh, Heron?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
By the way, John is absent, Conway?
Approved.
Henderson? Hister?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Edwards is absent, Edwards is absent, O'Day goes yes, motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to the IFC, public communications, opportunity for the public to speak to the planning group, behind our subject members, who lead groups, like jurisdiction that are on the agenda. Um, there will be a one-minute time limit, time limit, is there any members in the public who wish to speak to your group on an agenda item? Okay, seeing none, then we want to agenda item D, consent items, there are none, moving on to agenda item E, certain informational items. Um, so our only information item today is a presentation from San Diego County, from the county on the climate action plan for the unincorporated area, Claire?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, my name is Claire Moss, I am a Claire in the county of San Diego, working on our climate action plan, with me tonight is Tyler Parker, uh, chief of San Diego. And the presentation I'll play to you is...
Thank you.
What a good last name for you, though.
Yeah, I did comment that a lot, yeah.
This one?
Yeah. You guys compliment us on the table all the time. All right, perfect, so while we get that up and running, I just want to point everyone's attention to the very first slide. Um, we do have all of our contact information on this first slide, so if you wanted to get in touch with us, our email, our social media handles, all that information is there. Um, it's just a good reference. Is that working?
Uh, yeah.
I'm not a PowerPoint person, I just have the... There we go.
It looks like a PowerPoint person.
Well, no, because he points and tells you what to do, I'm like, ah.
It's all about telling you.
Right, I thought that, I've got the equipment, I just don't know.
It's all about us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, so our email, our website, all our social media, it's all there, so if you have any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts, that would be the best I could request. On the next slide, we'll go into what is the new climate action plan?
Just, uh, just use the...
Perfect. So, a climate action plan is really just this multi-objective plan that's really trying to balance a variety of interests, right? So, environmental, economic, community interests, and it's really all about reducing greenhouse gas emissions within county operations and the unincorporated area. Uh, and one of our goals is actually to be net zero by twenty forty-five, and what we say, or what we mean by net zero, is that we are removing as many emissions as we're producing. So, the climate action plan is similar, but different from other plans, like the regional decarbonization framework, which you may have heard of. Um, that plan is really looking at how to suggest different activities for jurisdictions, businesses, um, individuals, how they can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and it's regional scope. Our county's climate action plan, again, is really just looking at county operations and the unincorporated area specifically, and how to reduce emissions there. On the next slide, um, again, to why the cap is really also about our communities, so it's about quality of life within the unincorporated area, and what we mean by that is looking at, you know, how are we planting more trees, where are we planting more trees, um, how can we improve transit options, or walkability, or bikeability, um, how can we reduce waste in our community? So, that's really why presenting and coming to you folks and hearing your thoughts on, you know, why climate action planning is important to you, and having more thoughts and ideas can be incorporated in the cap. It's remain part of us, and it's really what we're saying. The next slide, um, there are a variety of projects upon us within a climate action plan, um, a lot of different things going with it. But first, we have a greenhouse gas inventory, which means where are greenhouse gases coming from, right, like wherever are the sources? So, for our climate action plan, we're really looking at five different sources, or those kind of other groups, we're looking at sources from built environment transportation, we're looking at water and wastewater, we're looking at solid waste, we're looking at energy, we're looking at agriculture and conservation. From there, we say, well, what are our targets, right, what does the state and county say we need to get to? So, for example, one example of a target is saying that we want to be met zero by twenty forty-five. Then we go through and say, well, how do we get there, and that's why we assign different cap measures. Um, so that's, you know, different actions that we can take that are actionable, um, to actually reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. All while we're doing that, we also are working through our environmental documents, smart alternatives, if you click once more. Again, there's fun for innovations in this part, I forget about. All while all that is happening, we're doing a ton of different outreach, so for example, we're doing public workshops, we're constantly updating our project website, we're going to different outreach events, right? So, if we had a community about this happening, we want to go to that community event, we want to talk to people, we want to inform them what's going on with cap update, and talk to them about why it's important to their respective communities. Um, we are conducting a survey, which Tyler hinted at beforehand, if you want to take it home to your family and friends, and we're also ensuring that all the materials that we're producing are language accessible. Next slide. And you can click a couple of times on this one. So, as I said before, um, when we are looking at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we are looking at a variety of sectors, one more. And so, we're developing our inventory and measures based on these five different topic areas, right? Solid waste, energy, agriculture and conservation, water and wastewater, and built environment transportation. But in order to be a measure, we do have certain criteria that must be smart looking, I think it's going to be four looks total. Perfect. So, it must be quantifiable, and basically that means that we're demonstrating and quantifying the reduction over time. Next, it must be within our jurisdiction, so we must have the jurisdictional authority to enforce that action. Then we must be able to monitor those reductions over time, right, so if we are reporting annually on our progress, we have to be able to monitor the progress that's happening. And it also must be additional, so that's additional to existing regulations, without that particular cap action or measure, it otherwise would not happen. Next slide. Any questions so far?
So, monitoring, is there going to be staffs to do the monitoring, and secondly, is there, who will do the enforcement? They want you to monitor, you decide there's a problem. So, two questions.
Yeah, so I will get into enforcement in a couple of minutes, but I will say this, so our team, we are in charge of all of monitoring, right now, we currently have an existing cap. And our team is putting out an annual report every single year about the progress of different actions. When we determine actions and measures, we are also assigning lead and supporting departments, and so there are multiple people and points of contact for a specific action to ensure that it goes forward. And we meet with people constantly, we talk through, you know, could we be making more progress here, what does it mean, so when we say it's enforceable, we mean like, we have the ability to enforce it, it's a policy that we can write. It's something that we have programmatic control over, it's an incentive that we can ensure this happens to the public. Any other questions so far? I know I have two minutes, so I'm going through a lot of information very quickly. All right, a couple more clips on this one. Um, one more, we're gonna skip this one, so we have a couple of different examples of sectors in detail, and I'm going to go to one that I think is a little bit more pertinent to you all, so next one. Perfect. And a couple more of those. So, when we come up with measures and actions, we have a whole process of doing that. So, through all the different outreach and engagement activities we've had, and this is the one that says county-wide culture of avoiding, um, recycling, composting, we've asked people, what is your equitable net zero emissions future vision for every single one of those sectors? So, we asked about it first, solid waste, for example, and we heard a variety of ideas about that, right? People want a whole bunch of different things when it comes to solid waste, you know, maybe they want more recycling, maybe they want more people to reuse their textiles, maybe they want people to compost more actively, right? So, we take all of those ideas, and we boil it down into a vision statement, so this is very broad idea, so I'm gonna read you the screen. This vision statement for solid waste is a county-wide culture of avoiding, recycling, or composting waste, where emissions associated with landfills have been eliminated, and people have equitable access to recycling and compost facilities, opportunities for economic development, and are encouraged to reuse and share resources, right, there's a lot going on in there. So, through the process, we try and boil it down, so within every vision statement, within every sector, there are multiple strategies, there are even more measures, there are even more implementing actions, and there are also paths to net zero. I'm gonna tell you all about that once we get through. So, boiling down a little bit more, we get to a strategy, right, slightly more concrete, it's a little bit nebulous, less nebulous. And this strategy is to increase solid waste aversion in the unincorporated county and county operations. Even more narrow, we want to achieve zero waste within the unincorporated area. Well, how do we do that, we do it through implementing action. An example of an action is to update the county's strategic plan to reduce waste, to include strategies to achieve zero waste, which is defined as ninety percent aversion by twenty forty-five. And when we say path to net zero, this is something that's not quantifiable, but nonetheless is going to help us get toward net zero emissions future. Um, and an example of a path to net zero option is to support material reuse events for the unincorporated area, so for example, there's a swap shop, textile recycling, repair events, so on and so forth. So, basically, it's kind of like a bundling activity, so we take a big vision, and we want to narrow it down into really concrete, tangible actions. Does that concept make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. Next slide.
Here.
Through a whole other example, because we're not going to go through that one.
Chief Boy?
Yeah. You're doing great, I so appreciate it.
Now it's here?
Yes. So, as I said, we are really building these different measures, and we want them to have all these different, you know, pieces within them, all these different components, and this is where we get to your point, um, about enforcement as well, right? So, we want every single measure to have a timeline associated, right? So, when are we going to accomplish it, when can we expect to receive, you know, a certain amount of accomplishments by a state? Um, so the timeline, what is the GHG production potential, right, so how many greenhouse gases can we expect to reduce by a certain date? How much is it going to cost? Who is implementing it, right, so we have to assign a responsible county department. We're also looking at equity-based outcomes and co-benefits, and by equity-based outcomes, we mean that, for example, one action within our climate action plan is to plant more trees. So, that could include doing a tree canopy assessment, determining what communities don't already have a lot of trees, and intentionally planting more trees within that community, right? So, that's an equity-based outcome, is identifying that there's a need, and then ensuring that there are more trees there. When we say co-benefits, we're saying, well, if you plant more trees, you can expect to increase air quality, maybe it's noise production, maybe you're, you know, limiting heat item effect, right? So, there are co-benefits associated with planting more trees. Any questions to that? Wonderful. All right, so now we're going to get into each of the sectors, so we have five more slides here, and I'll walk through very quickly all of the different concepts that we're thinking about within each of these sectors. So, for solid waste, we have four measures that really focus on reducing overall waste in landfills, in order for us to get to zero waste, again, ninety percent aversion, in both county operations and the unincorporated area. We are looking at improving waste management practices at county-owned facilities, so landfills, and as well as the unincorporated areas with privately-owned landfills. So, that's in essence what we're looking to do with solid waste. Within energy, we have three measures, and they really focus on increasing renewable energy, electrification, and energy efficiency in the unincorporated area as well as county operations. Any questions there? We'll keep going, if you have any questions, feel free to call. Um, within agriculture and conservation, we have five measures. Um, within agriculture and conservation, we have the unique potential to really reach our net zero goals through land preservation, tree canopy growth, reducing emissions from the agricultural equipment and operations, and increasing carbon storage on working lands through environmental sustainable practices. Within water and wastewater, we have three measures that are really focusing on decreasing water consumption by increasing water efficiency, retention, and recycling, and reuse, as well as increasing stormwater collection, wastewater collection, and treatment. And finally, we have built environment and transportation, we have eight measures here that focus on decarbonizing, decarbonizing on road and off road vehicle fleet, supporting active transportation, and reducing single-vehicle occupancy rates. And that's all environment and transportation in the nutshell. So, again, a lot of information, total of five sectors, we have our survey, and then go one more. We have a timeline slide, so right now, we're again, you know, in that summer twenty twenty-three range, right, so we've had a lot of outreach, we've done a couple of workshops. Um, but the exciting thing that I want to point you all to is the draft climate action plan that is going to come out for hold review in the fall. So, that's coming up very, very quickly, so right now, we're doing all the rounds of all of those meeting meetings, just to let folks know that this is coming. Um, it's something to be aware of, look out for, if you have any other questions, and you want us to come back, please let us know.
Um, with the agriculture and conservation, I get those, um, goals, I guess, and then I get the goals relative to water and wastewater, but I think there's a big opportunity for water conservation and agriculture.
Solid.
And I'm not quite sure whether there's a connection between the two, because this didn't seem to talk about agriculture at all, it was all about, what seemed to be more about the people living here, not the farmers that are growing the things, and there can be a lot of things that they can do to improve the water that they consume, I mean, or the amount of water that they consume.
Yeah, I appreciate bringing that up, so you're right, so a lot of the measures and actions that you're seeing within the water and wastewater section, it is really specific to landscape and development. With agriculture and conservation, our primary focus was land management practices, which inherently, you know, connect to water usage, right? So, we do have a lot of goals to reduce equitable water use within the county, and for agriculture and conservation, I'll point you to this one program that we're currently building, our carbon farming program, and we're looking at a variety of practices that will reduce the, you know, water usage, so for example, we know that utilizing additional compost, for example, will actually reduce the need for more equitable water use on specific plants. So, that's something that we're actually currently looking into and exploring more, but if you have more ideas on how we can incorporate that further.
I just wanted to try and make sure that we have an articulated goal.
Yeah.
In agriculture that says, let's save water, too.
Yeah, I, I think that's something I'd absolutely include in the resource account.
I have a question about the solid waste.
Sure. Um, throughout the pamphlet here, you emphasize county operations, and I know that the businesses will have to accommodate the new efforts as well. When I'm thinking about restaurants, the ganja waste issue there, we have this lady, a family that lives in a restaurant, and it's amazing how much food, five gallons of rice, um, in one of their continent, was like, for example.
Yeah.
How, how do you expect restaurants, for example, I mean, I could, just before I took, yeah, I took my little yard and my little kitchen scraps, and I put them in my yard waste for pickup on Thursday.
Well, I'm so glad you're doing that.
It was just this big, but they've got.
A lot.
Amazing amounts of waste.
Yeah.
Is there an incentive for them to do anything, or fines, or can they, is it feasible, I mean, that's a huge amount of money.
It is, it is huge, um, I would say solid waste is a huge behavior change, right? So, I think we're all experiencing that on the individual level ourselves right now, and you are looking towards like bigger operations like restaurants, and saying like, what can I possibly do? Um, Tyler and I actually spent the last year working on a project called the Organic Materials Ordinance Update, in which we were trying to understand how we could better divert organic materials and offer additional, you know, solutions for people. So, that is a program that changes the way the zoning ordinance looks at organics, and says, well, now restaurants can bring their organic waste to farms, for example, for composting. So, it, you know, further distributes the system, so instead of there only being one option, which was previously the landfill, or, you know, maybe one commercial composting facility, right? So, we changed the ordinance just, almost exactly a year ago, to reduce some of the permit tiers, so people could see that there's a little bit more of an incentive to increase, you know, organic material composting operations within the unincorporated area, be it there's going to be, you know, additional, um, commercial operations, or even just allowing farms or agricultural land to take organics from residents or restaurants. So, we are slowly making progress there, but that is part of the strategic plan to reduce waste, which is how the better public works. Um, and they're looking at a variety of options to, you know, provide to the public, um, to reuse organics and waste stream.
You need to look towards San Francisco, my daughter lives there, in a six-story apartment building, and they have to compost, because the apartment building gets discounts from waste management if they recycle and compost. So, like, everybody, they provide a compost thing in everybody's apartment, and this, the city, you know, so it's just, the compost factor up there is huge.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, there are some jurisdictions that have been amazing examples for what it could look like, right? So, um, as part of all of our work, we do a ton of research and talking to people, and trying to understand what are best practices, and how can it be implemented in the unincorporated area? So, that was something that we did for the Organic Materials Ordinance. Um, I will say that as of right now, the entire state is under a mandate to increase organic recycling, right, so that's why you have that bin, so we are seeing that being coming rolled out, but...
Where I live, we don't have a compost bin, we can just, we have to just, I guess, put it in our green bin, but we don't have, like, I know some people in the city got compost bins.
Yeah.
But out here, we don't.
Yeah.
So.
We can put it in our yard waste.
You can, yeah, we, we actually compost and use it in our gardens, but I know that parts of San Diego City got compost bins.
Some of us do have compost bins, you know, that sit in our, you know, kitchens, right, and then we take it out with the, with our, you know, trash and compost, and recycling everything. Um.
I think some people have, don't they have ones they put out on the curb, too?
Yes, yeah. Um, and the one trick you've heard about that is that we do have a variety of waste colors within the unincorporated area, right? So, not every person is going to have an identical, um, program to, you know, someone in the neighboring jurisdiction, um, and that has been a little bit of a challenge, and so we've been talking to our, you know, Department of Works, and we have tons of conversations with them, specifically about the rollout, and they have, you know, monthly meetings to talk about how can we improve, and what other jurisdictions are doing, um, and they have folks from all across the state who join as well. So, I'd absolutely include, um, the reference to San Francisco, just as a FYI.
Tidym, although I'll say, I just moved my son back from Berkeley, um, the Bay Area, a lot of the restaurants up there do have exactly what you're talking about, yeah. To, his apartment did not, but the local restaurants did, so, you know, go figure. But, I'm gonna ask you about water.
Sure.
Um, and we don't have our resident water expert tonight, uh, Kathleen, unfortunately, but I am curious, what, what's your discussion, because you're talking about some high-level stuff, it sounds really great, I'm a huge fan of the potential of recycled water, I think that is the future of water in California. Um, but what you're buying, we have, you know, we've got two of our local water agencies that are in the news for a certain reason, but there are a lot of water agencies in San Diego County.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about county-wide plan here that will very heavily impact the, uh, unincorporated areas, a lot of great goals, what is your discussion, what's your buy-in, both from the recycled standpoint across all these water agencies, but also stormwater, um, capture, because I noticed that was in there as well, which is also one of those things that gets talked about a lot, and then nobody actually figures out how to do it in a, you know, economically, uh...
Well, there's really a great story.
We had more stories.
Three barrels right now.
Wow, I'm talking more water agency, California than Indiana, but...
I think this is both then, right, my response will touch on both of those.
Yeah.
So, and this comes back to the really original point about what we have authority over, right? So, the county does not have authority over the different agencies that you referenced, right? So, it's not buying there, but when we're talking about how we can reduce potable water, we do have a variety of incentive programs, so we have the Water Safety Rebate Program, and I think there's about fifteen or so different options that all residents can take part of, if it's something that interests them. So, you know, that could be your landscape replacement, so you're, you know, removing your grass or turf, and you're planting different species, you know, native species, trout, zellin, trout, drought-tolerant species. Um, so those are different examples of plans, we also have additional incentive programs that we're looking into to like increase, um, people, you know, just to move towards something that's less potable water. Um, we're working with our partners in D H Q to look through different permitting options, right, so how can we incentivize or make the permit process easier for stormwater and gray water capture, right? Um, so that's something that we're exploring, and then the additional would be different policy updates, so we have the incentives, and then we also have policies, right? So, how can we require that when people, you know, are changing, if there's new development, and we want to decrease the number of like potable water usage, so we want to increase the water efficiency conservation, um, of that specific development. So, there will be different policies that we can put in place, and that's something that we do have jurisdictional authority over.
So, just to clarify, it's more of an individual, or you just mentioned like if there's a new apartment complex that's going up, the requirement's not like trying to set some policy that's going to have the water agencies actually say, okay, you've got some targets that you need to hit, okay?
That's a substitution.
I just wanted to clarify, do you understand the separation powers?
Yeah.
And I'll just add one thing, so, um, Tyler was exactly spot on when it comes to this climate action plan, because what we do is for the unincorporated county, right, not the incorporated cities, state, federal, tribal, but our unincorporated communities. But, we'll still have some of these bigger conversations with the other cities, with these big water agencies, and other folks that are involved in this bigger picture, when we talk about, you know, net zero and this big, this bigger regional effort. So, those conversations do happen, they don't get implemented through this plan specifically, um, but they are still part of a broader conversation of sustainability in the region.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions on measures and actions?
I heard you address, uh, many plans.
Yes.
A lot of travel resistant plans. Uh, I went to a presentation at Water Conservation Partner, and was surprised to know that they, they're more fire resistant than the plants brought in from Europe.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
It's amazing, yeah, you know, that's a whole, um, part, actually, one of our key members worked on that particular work, so we're very happy about that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, appreciate it, appreciate your service, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, folks, moving on to agenda item F, uh, this is the first of our action items, it's just one for today. Um, we are going to be talking about the recirculated draft environmental impact report for the Conwood Sandmine. Um, the, the Conwood Sandmine Subcommittee has met a number of times since it was presented, and there was a public meeting on July twenty-fifth, uh, over here at Hillsdale to discuss the plans. The Conwood Subcommittee drafted a letter that is gonna pop up here in a second, um, and then Allison will briefly review, and then we'll talk about, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, so, um, my subcommittee, well, one of my subcommittee members is here, Elizabeth, who's, uh, been very helpful in this, in drafting the first letter, drafting this letter, and this letter, not to, we are not to rehash what we've already done. This effort is exclusively to address the recirculating in the area, so the points that change from that first one to this one. So, I just want to frame that, because there is not to be any discussion about anything else, just the new improved measures and points. So, if you saw your letter, and, um, I will tell you that the draft changed one little bit again, so version, you, you don't have version, uh, F up there, right? So version, you, you don't have version, uh, F up there, right? You have the...
This is version F.
Oh, that is version F, okay, cool.
It's just in Word, not in...
Is that the one that you sent to us?
Uh, this is not the one that I sent you. There are some minor changes to this.
We're minor, all of this, that was thrown into. But, but what the Subcommittee did was organize our, our thought process and, and categorize the general, general areas of concern. So the project description changed, the, there were some traffic issues. There's the backfill issue and biological resources. So those are the four main areas that we focused in on. Some of you all were there, uh, last week with the five hundred community members and, and, uh, you heard some of what is in this letter, um, and other things that are not in this letter. Because from our point of view, the value of planning point of view, it's what's in our community plan? Just to refresh, reiterate, what's in our community plan vis a vis this project? So where do those things intersect, right? Um, so, so bottom line, let me, uh... Let's see, any, anybody have any questions before?
I have an overall...
Cause there's a lot of details that we can get in on.
An overall question, so based on the committee's review of the new plan, revised plan, and the current positioning of the developer, developers, what, what's your high-level takeaway? I mean, give me some sense of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they, there's, again, it's hard because you wanna go, you always wanna refer back to the initial, the initial draft, E I R. But, but the, the bottom line is, the residential community, and because it's a residential community, all the details ought to be figured out. We just heard a county description of a, of a, of a, an amazing thing that they've got going, where they quantify, they monitor, there's, there's all of these, uh, things that they will do. That is not something that is in the plan. So for us, our, our committee, we were thinking, so where's the monitoring of a humongous, millions of cubic yards of, of, of sand in mine? And, and then a lot of that is on our roads. And if you just think about it from a bird's eye point of view, it makes no sense. But from our point of view, we can, we, we give them our concerns on the last page from the community plan point of view, but we detail it with some of the specifics. So trucks on, on suburban roads, trucks on suburban roads and the number got increased in their recirculated E I R. So it was a, it was, it was bad enough. And then, and then they added more trucks. They somehow decided there were fifteen more trucks that were gonna be on the road.
Well, they were doing the backfill, wasn't it? Isn't that where it came from?
Yes, so, so, so again, trying to keep in, 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 in mind of what, what is our, what is our, what's the method of our madness? What was it that we need to focus in on to get the point across, right? So high level, traffic and all of, and the kind of traffic. And then there's trucks on the road. What happens with the truck on the road? We all might be hiding. So they have mitigation measures and our job is to say, well, they changed the mitigation measure from A to B, is that adequate? In our opinion, no. And why is it not adequate? Um, so again, quantifying and monitoring, two amazing words that the county understands. So, so what our point of view is, is that you're going to need to understand that a sand mining operation in residential neighborhood, we can't just say it's a sand mining operation in residential neighborhood, we have to pinpoint some issues. Okay, so, uh, yeah, the, the additional truck trips, that's huge. Um, the, the fact that it's now, in addition to, I think, um, Michelle was asking me earlier, so, you know, there are all those other trucks that are on the road because of the, uh, Robertson's and Hester's and all that.
Superior.
And superior. So, so, so we, our point is to bring that up because in the recirculated D I R, they increased the trucks. So that's a change we can address. It's permitted, it makes sense. Uh, then, on, on the next page, we're talking about the, the backfill issue. So they're taking sand out, they're backfilling it in. There's a, there's a timeline associated with that, that their point is, okay, so we're gonna take this material out and then we're gonna mitigate. Um, phase one, two, three, four, if you recall. So, uh, our point is, well, so you're going to mitigate, but it's, how do you mitigate having just entirely disturbed? We can't just say that, there's gotta be specifics. One of the things that they're going to be backfilling with is quote-unquote inertic debris. What the heck's that? Well, concrete asphalt and, and, um, there has been no, uh, uh, there's not really monitoring of that. And there's, there's no, uh, real way to say, well, we haven't seen. And Elizabeth chimed in on this one about the stormwater quality and Sweetwater Water Authority and all that. They have, we do not have access to their meeting minutes about this particular project. But the idea is they're gonna have something to say about things that are going into the watershed from that backfill, for example, and things like pH and things that are in the, in their inert debris. So, so that's a, a point that we brought up. And then the, and I'm gonna pick on this, cause I think this is just coincidental that we're, we're, we're seeing the county in their, in their, in their methodology. Well, if the project applicant have this type of, of, of monitoring program in place, you know, that would have been a good thing, but the project applicant does not. And so there's a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of uncertainty. And again, I think our Subcommittee's point is, well, this is a sand mining operation in a high-end residential neighborhood. It doesn't even have to be high-end, just a residential neighborhood. And there are uncertainties, that's unacceptable. So they use words like "to the extent feasible" numerous times. But we'll, we will mitigate to the extent feasible, that's not good enough. That's, that's uncertain and the neighbors, I think they are owed more than that.
Did you want them to do it to a point where it's unfeasible?
Yeah, well, I think...
I mean, if they can do it to where it's feasible, the question is whether or not that's enough? Not whether or not, I mean...
Right.
It seem, it seems to me, the way I was reading
Yeah, see.
the, the letter, there are concerns.
Yes.
And there's not a lot of evidence being put forth necessarily by either side. When I read your letter, there would be like, well, that's not good enough. Well, why isn't it good enough? Or is there a law that says that that's not good enough? Or is there, is there a standard that we should be looking for that's not being met here? Instead of what, when, my experience being on this side of the conversation, when people come in and talk about their projects that they have problems with, there's like, things that we could do about, stuff that we can do about. And then there's just like, stuff we can't do anything about, right? So when they're gonna, if they're gonna come in and bring in stuff, backfill material, and they call it inert, is there some other term that we should be asking for as opposed to saying inert's not good enough? Do you understand what I'm saying? We should be, we shouldn't be necessarily attacking them just because they're, we don't like the project.
Right.
We should be looking at the plan and whether or not the plan addresses the concerns.
Right, so here, the, just to be specific about the inert debris thing. So there are, uh, points that our, our committee will never have access to because we're not the Sweetwater Authority. But, but that said, there are quote-unquote stringent lead and pH thr- pH thresholds.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And what, and I, I, I think...
So that's the kind of thing you try to put in there?
Right.
And, and, and yet, um...
Cause I thought that was point, a good point, that says, if you're gonna put inert materials in there, put good inert materials in there, not just something that you lay with inert, right?
Our job isn't to give them ideas or to suggest. Our idea, our, our, our group is to analyze what it is that they have. Like when map comes before us and it's not complete, we can only deal with what's there. We can't offer up things. Well, we should, it's not our, it's not our job. Our job is to pick it apart. Our job is not to suggest. Our job is to say, it didn't...
You can't say what would be good enough?
No.
You can't say this is, if it was addressed this way, it would be good enough?
It's not my, it's not my job. My job is to say, they say inert debris and that's...
Then you just say inert, inert debris. I don't know exactly what is inert debris, but it doesn't sound good enough for me. It sounds like a lot of not trust.
We're not geologists.
I understand, and you're not, and you're talking to people who might be geologists.
But I think that's the point, Michael, that this is our comment letter on the, our D E I R to the county. It's not a normal, it's not like a normal recommendation. We don't have to do that. Not the county did it.
I, I, I get that.
Cause I agree with you generally in that if it was the county saying, no, we need your formal recommendation like they do all these other projects, then we can give those concerns. Of course, we don't have the resources to properly say, like, again, we're not geologists. But I think this one specifically is telling the county, this is where our concerns lie. And we have, we, maybe they'd like us to say, well, what are there? But that's, they're, they're the ones that have to do that. And that's why I'm comfortable with the, the letter, you know, if you wanna use the word vague, but not giving those, not giving those recommendations, because this is not a recommendation, it's a comment.
Well, but sure, I guess what my, my critique is, is that the, there's a, there's a general approach that says, you give us this information and we don't really quite trust you, so we don't think it's good enough. We don't think that it's enough. We don't think what is enough. We don't point to a standard. We don't say, you know, the, the state says that you have to do this. She's asking for, which I think is a good, good recommendation, to put in the, the monitoring and the, um, tracking and reporting, right? Is there anything that says that an E I R, E I R has to have those things? Because if it doesn't have to have them, we're not gonna have them. We can make a recommendation, but it's not in the law, we're just waving our hands, right?
The issue about inert materials had to do with, um, them saying that it could possibly include concrete and asphalt. And then that would end up in runoff and water that could potentially be drinking. That's where that came from, the concern. Asphalt and concrete.
Just kinda trying to reflect back my take on the letter. Um, I actually felt you did address some things. And I, what I like, if you will, Mike, is that, I like that you said that this is out of community character. You really flew back to kind of what a core focus of mission statement of the Community Planning Group is, is does this fit within community character? And you're finding the new E I R still is not addressed issues that, that you felt, that we felt do not reflect our community character. Um, and you highlighted the, the potential for runoff and contamination, referencing that this is a protected watershed. Uh, and there's potential with, with that, the contamination. Uh, you cited the data that you mentioned at the meeting about you're using COVID traffic data, which is not valid, is really not valid data. So I thought that was a very, a very specific, solid point to say, you're saying this has no effect, that we find that this will be no meaningful effect on your local streets, but you're using the wrong matrix to measure this against. Um, you talked about the rip raft and how that is not in character with this riparian, protected, uh, you mentioned some of the endangered species like the Delphirio. So I, I, I did find in there a number of, you know, we're not scientists, so we don't have like that level of potential. That would be something hopefully the U P A would, would weigh on, well, we can help anyway. Um, but at least from my take, I appreciate that the work you guys did on it. And, and I, I liked that you flew back to the community character element because I, I enjoyed hearing a lot of the commentary from, uh, the community and citizens. Flying to a slight bird block, I did a lot of this for schools during the Great Recession. And sure, I love the parents who stood up and spoke from the heart and talked, but I really liked the ones who brought some data because that sways policymakers as when you can bring hard data, especially economic or environmental data. And I felt that you're, the letter actually struck a nice balance on that, so I do appreciate. I would like to know what the differences are, cause you said you were gonna touch the differences. And so I would like to know what those are.
Right, so it's actually, it's one, it's the, uh, the number of drop structures, uh, that are at, that's on, uh, on the punch list, the first, uh, level, the first, uh, punch list of concerns. And it's, uh, literally, we changed the word, these drop structures to one of these drop structures. And, uh, one of the Subcommittee members pointed that out. So, um, and I, I really appreciate the expertise of the Subcommittee. And again, we're not environmental lawyers, we're volunteers. We, we do all of this and we know we don't get a lot, and, and this, what is this letter gonna be? Kinzami. So, so, uh, but we have to weigh in on that, our neighbors demand that. And, and if they want us to look into it as deeply and as, and as, with as much expertise as our, uh, you know, non, non-geological, professional wives can muster up.
I mean, I have one question, and I didn't, I will admit, I didn't get to read through it all cause I was on a plane flying from San Francisco here. Is there anything about health concerns as far as asthma and dust? I live above the Superior gravel quarry and we dust pretty much four times a week because the dust and, you know, there's, there's a lot of different, especially digging up all of the soil, the, um, you know, there's...
Particulate.
Particulates, there's a mountain fever, is that what?
Valley fever.
Valley fever.
And so...
Right? And I don't know if that, it's...
Well, so again, we, we bring back to where our, our mission is in this particular area. It's only to address the E I R and the recirculated, right?
Okay.
So what changed? And as I recall, the, the dust issue was, was, was in the first draft as well. But, but we, we talked about the mitigation of the dust and the birds...
It could be mentioned because of the additional truck trips. They say it, it'll have no effect, no difference than the original draft E I R.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That's a lot of trucks and it doesn't matter, they can have water trucks sprayed in town, it's still a dusty mess.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it was, and so again, trying to, to, uh, you know, high-level look is, is, it's the number of trucks and, and all of it goes along with that. And then we did make a point saying that they, they really don't address the issues. So, but that's in, that again, in general terms, still not addressed.
Absolutely. Well, most of the mitigation and, and especially having to do with the biological section has to do with aftereffect.
Right.
We're gonna leave you better than we started.
That's a good point in terms of, it's, it seems like the focus is more about the end. And you guys, your point about, well, what about during the project? How is this gonna be managed? And, and I think it's reasonable to expect some monitoring.
Well, they do have monitoring there.
And reporting.
But, but it's...
Cause they're, they're have current operations. And I was concerned about, okay, so what about these, this term of, of essential, you know, to the, to the amount feasible? What, what could I expect them to do as like, to the most amount possible? Is that the other term that we should be looking for? And it should be like a strong statement that says we want monitoring or, and we don't... And it should be like a strong statement that says we want monitoring, or, and we don't want concrete, asphalt in there. I mean, it seems like you made some really good points.
We want sand back.
Chuck, I, I think a lot of this calls back to an issue that was part of the EIR's first presenting to us. And that is, this is not a usual routine project. This is one very specific, it has, has a lot of science and engineering, mining engineering in particular behind it. None of which any of us, including us, who are scientists and engineers, not mining engineers, have experience. And from the way the county responded to us at their previous presentation, I don't think there is anyone important about the county. As to his name or knowledge, the suggestion we made was that they hired a consulting firm. Now, if we could morph just for a moment, when we had the school project, Liberty Charter, the group of citizens who opposed that project and just hired a consultant, a traffic engineering firm, who very promptly and readily came up with a whole laundry list of problems that were confronting Liberty Charter, which Liberty Charter knowingly was abusing and misusing and, and us was pulling them out. I think there's potential for a greater, engraver set of responses here. Also, we're dealing not with an unknown quantity in the people who owned this any progress. They have been in this county, they have bought off courses, they have abused the neighbors, they have been found guilty of doing things which are totally unacceptable. So that is the basis on which I think most people would judge them, which I think is all the more reason that the county has to take more specific steps in the area to quantify, verify, look at standards that are standards, which should be, uh, recognized and adhered to. Now, that was several months ago, the county was asked to do that. Not that we have the, the right to tell the county what to do, but this is a project which is going to involve hundreds of billions of dollars. This is not a small subdivision for homes. This is a gigantic project over many years. And one would think that a modest amount it would cost the county would pay for itself many times over. And it appears as though the county has nothing but that type, and I, I do not know. And, and I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think they have any ability to judge the EIR on its own. So when you point out, what are we saying and what are the standards by which, once you know, we don't know. But I don't think the county knows, and someone, at some point, very soon, is gonna have to make a decision based on knowledge. And I find it horrible that for a project this size, the county seemingly has not engaged a neutral engineering firm and a consultant. And I don't know if we can apply any additional pressure.
Give me your political representation, please.
Uh, but, you know, it will go to the, um, appointment for this now. The, um, commission, the planning commission. And those few times that we have interfaced with the planning commission, I'm not impressed that there's any expertise-
Well, they, they-
For anything in that group of people.
They won't even come out to see where it is. They will, they'll just trust what the county is saying as, you know.
So with all that in mind, the letter, I think reflects that we can do our knowledge, but with also our appropriate concern that the components of this project are not someone who is at least on the coffee in any fashion.
You know, one of the things we could do to your point, Chuck, is on, uh, right before the conclusion, where it says the mining operator should not be the decider, it's, it's on the stormwater quality department. This project should have independent monitors and inspectors. And, uh, one final question, this is regarding those structures, but who is going to maintain the structure that the reclamation is completed through the county? So maybe what we could do is, is shift that a tad, or reiterate it in the conclusion, and put, um, your, your strong words about the county should make greater effort to quantify, monitor, ensure it's mitigated, engage in neutral mining, uh, decision based on knowledge, those kind of words.
Yes.
At, uh, at the end. What do you think about that?
I, I would be comfortable with that, making this appropriate.
I can wordsmith it a little bit better, but I, I go down your main points.
I think-
Or, or not?
No, I think, as you said, Allison, the, uh, we focused a lot, we talked a lot about how our scope on this is like very specifically addressing what was in the recirculated one, and I, and I, and I think, I said this during our initial subcommittee meeting, but the point of that, and something I emphasize, anytime we have something like this, because I don't want the county to ignore us, as they would other comments that go outside that scope, with, with that being their reason, that, okay, you're not, now you're talking nonsense, I don't even wanna consider the rest of what you have said. But, in terms of that, specifically, I think that's a general thing that with the new additions, like the extra trucks and whatever that wasn't addressed, is fair enough to put in there. Um, so I would be okay with it. I think it's, it would stay within the scope of what the county-
Minor to, uh-
Yeah, like if we were gonna rehash the whole thing, that would be too much, but something like that. So if you wanted to come up with language, you know me, that I can include if we, if we agree to that today.
Do you have, did you read that?
If you wanna wordsmith it now?
Oh, let's do it. I'll tell you.
You can, you can, you keep going.
Okay, he's gonna edit on his machine, because mine is just-
Well, you're gonna wordsmith it, and then you'll tell.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion about this?
Just a formatting thing, what is eighteen twenty-one twenty-nine at the very bottom?
Well, 'cause the pages, see the pages are already in it?
No, 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 it, it refers to the validate or-
Yeah, but look, it's on the, on the conservation goals, on the community plan, page is thirty-six, thirty-seven, numbers, it's actually eighteen twenty-one.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, it's awesome.
My brain just went into a game that it was like in the greater-
Yeah.
Right. Right, if you're gonna do the community plans, like I was looking for, where are all those points again?
Oh.
I, I added-
I have it saved on my desk.
What the, what the subcommittee drafted, um, I, I just put it to like, you know, like letterhead, just the thing up there, and then I added my, uh, signature and, uh, so not really much else, other than, so what you saw, those are also additional changes. I also added a page on there. Any other questions, comments, discussion on this in general?
No, I just wanna say, I appreciate everyone's effort. I just think, wanna make sure that we're gonna communicate, we wanna communicate from a place of, uh, clarity, I guess, and evidence and, and data, and rather than just complaining.
And I'm reassured by the fact that we will have more of an opportunity to do that once the, I don't know what they're gonna call it, I assume the final draft EIR is issued. And at that point, when they seek a more formal recommendation, then I think we can pre, try to get whatever resources we can from the county to maybe address those concerns. Because, like, it's like, but we, there will be another chance, there's gonna be like six more times.
Okay, remember, who's a secret journey to come to that meeting?
Uh, Elizabeth, any comments from you? Elizabeth is, uh, on the subcommittee, um, for, any, anything else? I'm not sure.
Um, no, I, I liked your idea, though, about, you know, suggesting to the county that you need an expert to look at this. This is too specific, it's too, um, big, you know, to not have an expert really judging publicly.
On, on the way here, I was thinking that this project's gonna, could define that area for, you know, generations.
When I bought my house above the Superior gravel quarry ten years ago, everyone said, oh, it's gonna be done in two years. They're still working diligently to take the whole mountainside and just leave a little, little, you know, thing for the water tower to sit on. They're, they're blasting it every week, it's still just going, so that was supposed to be done ten years ago, it's still going. So this thing's thirty years, it's gonna be fifty years.
Any other discussion on the group comments?
Good question. So what about instead of playing at the end, just play it in the introduction?
I'm gonna do that, you're welcome.
Yeah, I think you'll have more-
Just tell me where.
Okay, then you read before furthermore, second paragraph of introduction, I'll, I'll, I'll put it right here.
Well, I wrote inventory, that was a mistake.
That's not supposed to be there?
No, that's supposed to be-
Introduction.
Introduction.
I can fix that.
Uh, okay.
He's, he's the other one now.
Any members of the public who should comment on this? Uh, okay, very good. Um, I will also add, uh, we're gonna, I'll send this letter via mail, via email, and then hopefully we stay, know they will stay in touch. But there's a new project manager, so he's, I mean, he's been better about, at least in my opinion, being in communication, I don't know.
From the county?
You had more success with Chris, yeah.
Uh, well, he just came on. I mean, that is one problem, going back to lack of expertise. They have changed-
Yeah.
Several times.
Yeah, he did just-
Since anybody was consistently, I don't know.
I will also, I know this is not really pertaining to us, um, or actually specifically, but at the larger meeting, uh, the twenty-fifth, where there was like five hundred people or so and whatnot, um, I think the county went into that meeting, I couldn't attend, but the county went into that meeting almost wary of what kind of public, um, feedback they were gonna get and reaction. And not, and specifically because of this project, but partly specifically because of this project, but more specifically, the county has very recently, um, had bad interactions with public, um, at public meetings that they posted. So not CVG meetings, but like other ones for other things, and then that has come back to the CVG chairs. Like, we were almost like kind of like more, like, you know, keep calm, you know, they're not on meetings, they're meeting, whatever.
They don't have, have a meeting, but they wanna tell you about-
Yeah, well, that's literally what they did, it was, yeah, that's a different discussion.
Yeah, she's supposed to be the moderator and-
Yeah, so, um, I appreciate our community's effort in being, uh, you know, civil, journeying that thing. And I, you know, obviously, it's a big concern, um, and I know there was a lot of passion from what I understood there, and that's great, but I think that reflects more on us. I wanted to just tell you that, because I know the county has been, like, they stopped sending people to meetings, because they've had other things. Again, at non-CVG meetings, but-
They were very appreciative at the end, they, um, and especially because we assumed that there'd be a long line still, that people wanted to speak, but it really did seem, because they allowed us to kinda have ten minutes to lay things out.
Yeah.
It meant that not everyone had to get up.
Yeah.
So that helped.
Good, I, I'm glad, I'm glad they gave it to them.
Let's hope that when it goes to the, moves forward through the county, that you get the time that you're allotted to speak and not cut off.
Yeah.
That has, has happened in the past to us on other issues, so.
Well, of the three supervisors that visit us, the ones that are all candidates, did any of them attend that meeting at all?
I believe all three of them.
Good.
Yeah. Gemessa and Monica Montgomery spoke, but I saw any record there.
Good, so they're, they're educating themselves, what, what they'll decide, we don't know.
Well, unfortunately, they suggested not.
They said what?
They said what they thought, that they were against it, so I'm afraid they'd be counseled now by the county regarding that.
Yeah, because we've had, we've seen supervisors step away from, you know, giving their opinions. I mean, candidates, they're different maybe, but I figured when I heard that they spoke, they were gonna get a lecture about it.
Yeah, yeah, so they may have to reevaluate themselves.
We didn't speak, we kept our peace.
It was very interesting, those of you who read the paper the next day, there was an article over there, it pointed out that around five hundred people. And at the end of the meeting, there was a request, all those opposed the project, please stand. And essentially, everyone did still. The article in the paper pointed out, with the exception of a very small cohort, a handful of people sitting in the back, that handful of people were four people from the meeting.
Yeah.
And we did not think it was appropriate for us to take a public stand one way or another. Uh, so, we was a, we had referred to-
I kinda thought that was, whatever, probably should have spoken and said, we're being your- I, uh, I don't wanna address that with, uh, what I don't-
We were mindful of just the thing that they were concerned about, and thought we should just keep quiet.
Very good. Allison, you ready for a motion?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Then as part of your motion, you'll read me what you're-
Okay, so I'm making a motion to remove the, uh, concept letter, um, the recirculated DEIR. With the addition of a sentence, and you're all, I'm at my best right now. Based on inconsistencies between the DEIR and RDEIR, the numerous miscalculations, the count, and the, and the, can you remind me? And the numerous miscalculations, county should engage the services of a neutral mining expert, thereby making a decision, their decision based on expert knowledge. It's okay, it's not my best word.
Um, just, just that, what was the last four words? Based on, making their decision on, uh-
Based on expert knowledge.
So I'm gonna just read it back.
And objective criteria.
An objective criteria.
Um, based on inconsist, based on inconsistencies, geez, between the EIR and the DI-
ART.
I'm sorry, the DEIR and the ART DEIR, numerous miscalcula, and numerous miscalculations, the county should engage the services of a neutral mining- expert, thereby making their decision based on expert knowledge and objective criteria. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I think that should go, uh, at the end of the second paragraph's first sentence, impacts. And before the word furthermore, the furthermore will be, now be a new paragraph, or a final, I didn't say finally. Great. Okay, instead of furthermore, finally.
Instead of furthermore, what?
Finally.
Fine, finally, oh, finally. Uh, I'm sorry, what was it? And you said numerous miscalculations?
Yeah, because you know, it's a, it's a truck trips, uh, but the, the mountain cubic, the cubic, uh, yards that went from, you know, A to B, you know, looking at their exact numbers, um, um-
There were several, um, uh, special species.
Yes. These species, yeah, exactly.
The number of sound barriers.
And size, the size of the, uh, rip, riprap structures, uh-
So, a, um, the motion was by Henderson, is there a second? Seconded by Steiger. Is there any further discussion? And I'll move on to a vote. Cosman?
Yes.
Uh, Daniel, absent Steiger?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Harbin?
Yes.
Elijah, absent Conway?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Kister?
Yes.
Fix?
Test.
Absent, absent, yes, perfect, thank you very much. Allison, thank you, the subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Thank you, Elizabeth.
I will send that, um, I'll send that to, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
To, uh-
Bryce?
Yeah, I'll send it to Bryce, but I mean, today's topic. Okay, very good. Almost done, folks, moving on to, um, item G, administrative, so just a few things that I'm-